Fifteen, two thousand and twenty. And this meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California Executive Order. And twenty-nine twenty dated March seventeen, two thousand and twenty regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on television and or online. In accordance with Executive Order N twenty-nine twenty, the public may only view the meeting on Millbrae Community Television Cable Channel twenty-seven. Or online at www dot M C T V dot T V. The public cannot come to the Millbrae Council Chamber to join this meeting as this is a remote meeting with no public location. Submission of public comments for those wishing to make a public comment at the June fifteen, two thousand and twenty special plan. Link Commission meeting, please submit your comments by email to be read aloud at the meeting by the planning administrator. Email comments must be submitted to planning. C O M M meetings at C I dot Millbrae dot C A dot U S. All email comments must be submitted. Prior to seven P M, all email comments shall be subject to the same rule as the otherwise government speaker comments at the mission meeting. Electronic comments for the June fifteen, two thousand and twenty Commission meeting may only be submitted via email. And such as Facebook, Twitter, Next will not be accepted. Reading of the planning administrator or email comments that the reading shall not exceed three minutes. Or such other time as the commission may provide consistent with the time limit. Shall become part of the record of the commission hearing. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Commission members and staffs are participating from remote locations. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live tonight on Millbrae Community Television Channel twenty-seven and online. On the Millbrae Community Television website, W W W dot M C T V dot T V. So can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Feng.
Present.
Uh, Co-Chair Quick.
Present.
Uh, Commissioner Wong.
Present.
Commissioner Davis, here, Commissioner Joe. All hearing accounted for.
Thank you very much. Can we have the pledge of allegiance to the flags, please? My pledge.
Allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation is one nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Divisible.
Justice.
With liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
For all.
Thank you, everyone. So anyone like to have a review today? Any commissioners? Seeing none, can we get a staff update, please?
If I may, Chair Feng, this is Keilin.
Director Kim.
I'd like to introduce our new Deputy Building Official Romeo Herrera from W C three. As I think most of you know, we have made some reorganization in our building divisions of Community Development Department. So W C three is one of the three contract building inspection services that we have. The other two being C S G and Fourleaf. So we have gone through some reorganization and Romeo joined us on March nine. And unfortunately, a week after Romeo had joined us, we went into a shelter in place order. So you guys have not seen Romeo much. But now with essential and non-essential business coming back to us. And we start to receive non-essential type of building application and you see more and more Romeo and Romeo typically done about fifteen to twenty inspections a week. In addition to cleaning up building permit file and also dealing with receiving electronic consent medal from the public. In since Romeo joined us on March nine and it has been a little over three months. So there you go. We have Romeo joining yesterday. I'd like to welcome Romeo and Romeo has been very helpful. And in addition to Romeo, we actually have a permit tag that also helping in the office. His name is Don, Don Wayne. And he is not joining us right, but in the future, hopefully soon when City Hall building reopen. All of you will have the pleasure to get Romeo in person as well as Don. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, everyone, and it's a pleasure to be with Millbrae. I I've got about twenty years of experience working for several jurisdictions of different sizes. From cities like City of Millbrae and larger cities like Los Angeles, City of Berkeley and City of Pasadena as well. I've come with the well of knowledge and I'm looking forward to help the City of Millbrae as much as possible. And so far it's been enjoyable.
So very much. It's good to have you, Mr. Herrera.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that we got a new building official, I think we're we're back on staff again. How are we doing on the building permit in general, Kim? Back twice.
I mean, we continue to receive electronic permit stuff metal and a lot of the permit ones are review approved and issued. They all handle electronically their occasion that we do our paper and those are by appointment and more like on the trip site appointment type of pickup and drop off. And there are documents that need to come into City Hall. Romeo will make arrangement with the applicants arrange for a time for them to deliver a plan set to us and vice versa. Same thing once the permit is completed and ready to be issued if they need paper permit, Romeo would handle that by appointment with with our customers. And we are getting busy and busier as we we start to receive review of non-essential type of improvements in our city. And as most of you know, outdoor dining went into effect last last Saturday and Romeo has been fairly busy doing some of these inspection. For example, the New Pancake House instituted outdoor dining and actually they have quite a lovely setup there. And we started to get going more restaurant requests to have outdoor dining and also uplift improvements.
Good. Yeah, I mean, I think we're all as a city look forward to having our businesses back in full swing again. We'd like to see the economic recovery as soon as possible for everyone involved. So that's very good news to hear then. Thank you very much for joining us, Mr. Herrera.
My pleasure.
Yeah, so we don't have any meeting minutes today. Okay, and so public communication, do we have anybody?
There is nothing to to provide at this time. There are no public communications at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. So no public communication. So we move on to number seven, new business nominations and the elections of Chair and Vice Chair. So can we have a nomination for Chair?
I motion to nominate Commissioner Quigg for Chair.
Second.
We have a we have a motion from Commissioner Joe to nominate Vice Chair Quigg to become the new chairman for the next upcoming year. And we have a second from Commissioner Davis. So can we get a roll call, please?
Do you want me to call out the names for their vote?
Correct. It should be too long.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Com- uh, Chairman Feng?
Aye.
Aye. Do I call out Commissioner Quigg to vote first?
You should. You should.
I don't think I'm just what is proper protocol here.
You should ask her to vote.
Okay. Yes, okay. So that's five to zero with a yes for Commissioner Commissioner Quigg to become Chair Quigg. Congratulations, Commissioner Quigg.
Thank you so much.
So we look forward to having another good year in the leadership of the hands of Commissioner Quigg. Look forward to, is it twenty-seven, twenty-eight years of experience?
I don't know.
I guess I guess we should all.
I think I saw something like nineteen ninety-seven.
So nineteen ninety-seven, if my math is right.
I think something like that, yeah.
Is it ninety-seven or ninety-one? I forgot which one it is.
No, not ninety-one.
No, I think I saw ninety-seven.
Is it ninety-seven? Get that with the, anyway, long time coming.
Out of years, it's time for me to retire soon.
Ninety-two.
Oh, ninety-two.
Okay.
Yes, August thirtieth, nineteen ninety-two.
I was ten years old.
Yes, you were. And smart as a pistol.
Yeah, so we all look forward to nearly almost twenty-eight years of experience. So we're very lucky to have you. Beautiful city. Thank you for your service, Commissioner Quigg.
Thank you so much.
So we now move on to the nomin- yes, my pleasure. Now we move on to the nomination of Vice Chair for the upcoming year.
I nominate Gene Joe.
Okay, we have one nomination from Commissioner Joe.
I will second it.
Okay. Okay, we have a second. Does anybody want to have a discussion about it? No, okay, okay. So from a rotational perspective, I think, you know, I think everybody should have a chance to become the leadership role. And I think the last time, I think it was from the point at which we. Have. The initial appointment. I think Commissioner Wong hasn't had a chance to become the leadership role. I would like to nominate Commissioner Wong to become the Vice Chair for the upcoming year.
Point of order, we we have a motion and a second on the table. Should we vote on it? Did the screen freeze? A little bit.
No, please. No. Does anybody want to talk about it?
I, can I speak? Where's the raised hand?
Yes.
There's a button here that says raise your hand.
Oh, I guess nobody's paying attention to that button. I guess, you know, just you can raise your hand. Go ahead.
I think we should go ahead with the vote. Um, I know that. A lot of things have happened and I know he's not had the opportunity yet. But I think time-wise, it would make sense to move forward with Gene Joe. And we do have a first and a second.
Any other comment from any other commissioners? Commissioner Wong.
So I'm new to the commission still, second year. I'm open to understanding the protocol and willing to learn more and. Understand how it works until the time when I have another nomination and acceptance. So I'm fine with that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Wong. That's very gracious of you. Okay, so if any other comment, any other commissioner would like to make any other comments?
I'm the only commissioner left, but it's a vote for for me. But I think it's just point of order. If there's a motion and a second, I think there just needs to be a vote. So.
Go ahead. Okay, all right. You guys make. Can we get a roll call, please?
Jen, Chairman Feng?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Joe?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
That's five to zero in favor of.
Congratulations, Commissioner Joe, become the Vice Chairman next year. Okay, so having said that, now we move on to consent calendar. Is there anything at all? I assume there's nothing. Okay, so move on to public hearing, item number nine, A, Millbrae. Accessory dwelling unit amendment. We do a city council and ordinance R thirty-one. Is it thirty-one or is it twenty-nine? I'm sorry. Um, accessory dwelling unit to chapter ten oh five zoning of the Millbrae Municipal Code to allow them provide for the regulations of. Well, accessory dwelling units, chapter two point oh five, zone of title ten of the Millbrae Municipal Code for consistency with the new article thirty-one, accessory dwelling units. Can we have the staff to present that?
You're, Sam, you're muted.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair, planning, good evening, Chair, planning commissioners, city staff and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Millbrae accessory dwelling unit ordinance for your recommendation for adoption by the city council. I would like to start by stating that the proposed Millbrae A D U ordinance fully complies with the California State A D U laws and regulations. The A D U ordinance before you is a result of extensive staff research and analysis, input from the public in the form of three community workshops. As well as input from the planning commission and the city council that began back on August eighteen, twenty nineteen. I'll now go ahead and put up a presentation for you. Can everybody see that presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
So tonight's presentation, this is the outline of going to provide a timeline of of the process for the A D U ordinance. A description of the A D U definition and types, a summary of the California State A D U laws. Talk about the staff research and analysis that was conducted for the A D U ordinance. The results of the planning commission study session, community outreach that was done, the city council study session, and then the proposed Millbrae A D U ordinance. So back in twenty sixteen, California passed A D U laws and regulations. Three, these are the three regulations that you see there, S B twenty-sixty-nine, A B twenty-two ninety-nine and A B twenty-four oh six. Which allowed private owners, property owners to. Create A D Us on their property. At that time, City Millbrae implemented these regulations, the state California A D U law. Through through the planning department and the building department. The planning commission A D U audit study session began on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. As the staff, city staff were developing the A D U ordinance. Then we held the three neighborhood community workshops on August twenty-seventh, September seventh and September tenth of twenty nineteen. There was also the city council A D U ordinance study session on October eighth, twenty nineteen. Then on January first, twenty twenty, California State adopted new updates and revisions to the A D U laws and regulations. And these were six laws that are listed here, which further clarified and restricted. The ability of local jurisdictions to regulate the A D Us. Right now, we're at the stage where we're staff is recommending the planning commission review the report and the A D U ordinance. And recommend approval for final adoption by the city council. The city council adoption is planned for, is planning to present it for adoption July twenty twenty. And if adopted, the ordinance would take effect thirty days after it is approved by the city council. So a little bit of information about the A D U definitions and types. The state of California defines an accessory dwelling unit as dwelling units with independent living facilities. That would be a kitchen, bath, sleeping area located on a lot with an existing or proposed primary single family or multifamily residence. There are several types of A D Us. There are interior A D Us that are constructed within an existing residence or accessory structure. Attached A D Us are created by an addition to an existing structure. A detached A D U, which is created by constructing a new detached structure. And then the junior A D U, which is located with an existing or proposed single family home. An existing room in that home limited to five hundred square feet in area. Here's a visual example, a graphic to help visualize the different definitions. Detached, freestanding structure in the backyard, attached. A D U that shares at least one wall with the primary home. And then an interior that's built from an existing converted space, for example, an attic or basement. So I wanted to provide a brief summary of the the California State A D U laws as of January first, twenty twenty. Uh, let's see. Stop showing that and. Do you see that, this document? This is the A D U New California State Law summary. And this is basically an overview of the rules that were adopted on January first by the state. You can see that. Basically, they they have specified the rules for junior A D Us. A D Us from one hundred fifty square feet to eight hundred square feet. If they cannot meet zoning rules and then from one hundred fifty to eight hundred fifty square feet, if it does meet zoning rules. Back on January first, the one thousand two hundred square feet was the maximum. Detached had a maximum size of one thousand two hundred square feet. The location of where the A D U could be, the lot size and coverage, the setbacks. So the state allows, requires four foot, allows four foot side or rear setbacks for new construction. The height requirements. The size. Provision for A D Us and multifamilies. Owner occupancy, parking. There's no parking required if it's within a half mile of public transit in a historic district. Or near car share. No replacement of parking for garage or demolition conversion and tandem parking is, it's also allowed in the set within the setbacks. A D Us do count as part of the arena affordable housing. Information about amnesty, impact fees, the prohibition on short-term rentals. So I wanted to show staff showing this slide to you here. Uh, so that you have a comparison of what the current state law is and what this Millbrae is posing. So are you seeing this slide here, Staff A D U Research and Outreach? Okay, sorry, let me get that again. So now we're at at the Staff A D U Research and Outreach. When the the new California State A D U laws were enacted. Staff heard a website A D U section with F A Qs. And resources on A D Us, Second Unit Resource Center that put out by San Mateo County. The summary of of state A D U laws, which was the chart that I just showed. And also the California Department of Housing Community Development A D U resources. There were also A D U guidance handout materials from San Mateo County that were shared to the public by staff here in Millbrae. And then. There was some training and workshops that staff participated in looking at new technology. One symbium web platform, which provides interactive mapping and and simplifies complicated regulation, including state laws and local city ordinances for A D Us. This is a company that is basically surveying all of the cities in California. And has an interactive tool that helps. People determine what the size and height and ordinance requirements are for A D Us in every city. And it's a very useful tool, tool using technology that people can use as they're developing their plans for A D Us. Staff also looked at providing information, updating our website, providing booklets. And other examples of looking at other A D U ordinances. And other cities and counties, all all part of the research that staff uses in developing the Millbrae's ordinance. Again, I mentioned the programs and training that staff participated in information from twenty-one elements. I'm at home for all San Mateo County that have provided extensive information, resources and materials and training about accessory dwelling units. Along San Mateo Peninsula, along the peninsula. So this is, this slide outlines the the community outreach. That the staff developed and organized the. Updating the website and the information materials on the state laws, both in the twenty sixteen and then the more recent state law updates or provisions of twenty twenty. The planning commission accessory dwelling unit ordered study session that was held on August nineteenth, twenty nineteen. The three neighborhood community workshops and then the city council A D U ordinance session that was held on October eighth, twenty nineteen. So we received, staff received input from the planning commission and these were the main. Points of feedback that staff received. There was general support for A D Us as a strategy to increase needed housing in Millbrae. There was an interest in limiting impacts to views and privacy from A D Us. And also interest in having architectural design compatibility, especially materials and colors of the accessory dwelling units. The commissioners wanted to preserve neighborhood character, limit the size and height of A D Us and encourage adequate off-street parking for A D Us. Also an interest that A D Us be counted toward Millbrae's regional housing needs allocation. And the commissioners also requested that staff research other San Francisco Bay Area City A D U ordinances and regulations to see how they were addressing some of these issues. Basically, what, based on the research that staff did comparing other peninsula city A D U regulations. This summary. Describes what, how they address the varying issues of size limits. There are slice limits ranging from eight hundred square feet to one thousand two hundred square feet. We had height limits ranging from fourteen feet to thirty-two feet. So some cities allowed for as low as fourteen feet up to thirteen, thirty-two feet. The the state. Basically requires that that they do be at least sixteen feet. Some limited A D Us to single story, others allowed two stories or did not specify. Many A D ordinances of other cities. Spelled out that they wanted the design to be similar or compatible to the main house. Some of the previous ordinances had setbacks, required setbacks of five feet from the property line. As of January first, twenty, the state now allows four-foot setbacks. One parking space per A D U unless located with a half-mile public transportation, then no parking required. This is pretty standard among all the cities. Currently, the peninsula cities with adopted A D U ordinances are Burlingame, San Mateo, Belmont, Daly City, Foster City, Hillsborough. San Carlos, San Bruno, Brisbane, although South San Francisco and San Jose. Some of these cities are in the process of actually updating their A D U ordinance to reflect the new rules that came out January first, twenty twenty. Little bit of information about the A D U community outreach. The survey, the staff prepared survey questions and had a group discussion on several elements, key elements of A D U. Planning, looking at open space and setbacks, architecture and design, looking at height and compatibility. And parking, off-street park, driveway parking is allowed if it's located greater than a half mile away from public transit. There was also some interest expressed by the public in the shuttle system. Player that was presented that was used in the outreach. The community outreach input workshops and the survey was that there was some general support for A D Us as a strategy to increase housing in Millbrae. The public wanted to see a limit impacts to views and privacy and they tended to prefer a single-story A D Us. They were in agreement with having architectural design compatibility and style and materials. They felt this was important. They were in agreement with having architectural design compatibility and style and materials, they felt this was important. They also felt that the height and size should be compatible with the residential character of the neighborhoods. And with on street parking demand was was a concern that the public had, they wanted to ensure that parking was available on the driveway. For residents located greater than a half mile from public transit. This is one of the requirements, if it's if it's within a half mile of public transit. The state does not allow does not require that additional parking be. Provided for the ADU, but if it's greater than a half mile of public transit, the ADU can use the driveway. For to specify the parking for that ADU. So this is just a brief summary, I won't go through all of these, but this is the summary of the survey results from the community outreach. In general. People felt that there should be additional parking beyond the half mile of public transit, so they they did want to see that there's driveway space available for the ADU. They felt that. There is actually strong parking again was a strong issue, they felt that it shouldn't. Well, he has a parking requirement, so they wanted to ensure that there was some parking for the ADU. There was interest in exploring a shuttle program to provide space beyond a half mile of public transit as a way to address. The on street parking issue. Straw, there was support for one story ADUs 50%. Reducing setbacks, there's support for that. And for both attached and detached ADUs. And in general, the people felt that the rear open space requirements should be relaxed for attached and detached ADUs in the backyard. So this was before the January 1st, 2020 California State ADU update, which which basically no no longer allows open space. Requirements to preclude a construction of an ADU. And again, the interest in having compatible design. 80%.
So I'm sorry, Sam, can you go back for a second?
Yes.
Okay, so out of all these statistics and and a polling that you've done, do you have a account on number of people that have given you feedback voted on each one of these? These criterias?
Yes, yes, if you look at the attachment. On. Attachment, I believe it's attachment F. There's detailed information on the actual numbers. Of people that that voted in this way, so this was like survey conducted amongst the groups of of people and out of the three workshops. And each group had a different element that they that they looked at. And groups were about six to seven people in each group who did the who voted on these. So it was a small, small group. And. The. Yeah, there's more detail in in the attachment F on the the study session from the city council.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Yep. So again, look at the survey result summary, going into a little bit more detail as far as the design review. We asked the members participating in the community workshop. What what were the most important elements for them to be considered in an ADU accessibility, visibility from the front of a lot roof shape, materials, landscape, color. And other sunlight or privacy, for example. Again, looking at the parking, the state requires that a detached ADU, it needs additional parking space only if it is more than a half mile from public transportation. But this slide, what we're showing here is a map and the red area is all parcels located within a half mile of public transit, El Camino Real. So primarily the the area in the hills of Millbrae is where. Parking would be. Recommended on the driveway, so there's some, there's some flexibility for Millbrae to to require a parking space on the driveway, off street parking. Accompany the ADU in the hillside area. But any of the location, any of the areas located within the red area, that's within a half mile of of public transportation. And Millbrae cannot require additional parking in this area. So this is a little bit of information from the city council, their input on the accessory dwelling units. They felt that the ADUs were part of the solution to the housing problem and encouraged. The staff and the city to do community outreach to encourage ADUs. They wanted ADUs to consider impact of parking cars and transportation. Consider the size of lots and neighborhood character regarding ADU size and height. They felt that a moderate size was appropriate around 850 square feet. There was support for onsite parking and closely monitoring the parking impacts. There was consensus on consensus on having compatible architecture with existing home and neighborhood. Majority of council members supported the proposed setbacks. They also suggested that a parking improvement authority might help solve and address some of the parking issues. And they also expressed interest in having staff. Look at the possibility about a public shuttle program for Millbrae Hillside residents. So. Now I'm going to talk about what the proposed ADU ordinance proposes as far as these key areas. And how how we are dressing. The. The the feedback that we receive from the community, from the planning commission and the city council. So with privacy, this was a key concern that was highlighted by the planning commission, city council and the public. So the proposed ADU ordinance would require that attached and detached ADUs be limited to one story maximum 60 feet measured from finished grade to roof ridge. The junior ADU must be no larger than 500 square feet and conform to the planning and building codes. Staff felt that this would limiting the ADUs to one story at a maximum 60 feet height would help address the issue of of privacy. And also shadows sunlight. The size should be minimum 150 square feet. At 100, 150 square feet to 850 square feet, it contains a studio or one bedroom. So that's the range for 150 square feet to 850 square feet. For. ADUs that are more than one bedroom, those they shall be 1,000 square feet. Looking at connection fees. The utility connected fee, let's see, did I could skip. So the utility connection for your capacity charge may be charged that proportion to the burden of the proposed ADU based on square footage or drainage fixture unit values. This is a question that people have asked, but. Is how much the what the fees would be? The fee would not exceed a reasonable cost of providing the connection service. For impact fees, there'd be no impact fee for a junior ADU or ADU less than 750 square feet in size. And for an ADU larger than 750 square feet, impact fees shall be charged proportionally in relation to the square footage of the primary dwelling unit. One question that has come up is fire sprinklers, so the requirements shall be determined by the building code and fire regulations. But an ADU and JADU is not required to provide. Fire sprinklers. If it's for the primary dwelling. The design, the design again must be compatible, the style, colors and materials with the existing house design and the neighborhood character. The the ordinance goes into a little bit more detail in this area, looking at the specific elements and how. Staff will evaluate the ADUs to make sure that they comply with the compatibility. And we talked also about we cover parking and quite a bit of detail on the ordinance. Talking about the parking spaces, how they can be provided tandem parking on a driveway or in setback areas. The parking, however, may not extend into a public sidewalk or public right of way. So this is for where parking is something that the Millbrae would require beyond the one half mile. Location. No parking may be required for an accessory dwelling unit if any of the following apply. So these are the key bullets here again. If it's located within one half mile. Then no additional parking is required. Again, if it's located with an architecturally historically significant. Where on street parking permits are required but not offered to the audience of the accessory dwelling unit. Or when designated parking area for one or more of the car share vehicles is located within one block of the accessory dwelling. This is another key area where the state allows. Some conversion of of parking structures for accessory dwelling units. So when a garage, carport or covered parking structure is demolished or converted to construct an accessory dwelling unit. In all of or in a portion of the demolished structures footprint or converted to an accessory dwelling unit, such off street parking spaces need not be replaced, including the parking required. Pursued to the subsection I above. So when, for example, if an applicant comes in and they want to use part a portion of their garage to. Expand to do an accessory dwelling unit, then they would not be required to provide replace that parking. Just wanted to mention that. Staff is recommending that there's one correction that we have. In the development standards. We're talking about fire sprinklers and we'll be making this correction here in the amendments. So duty accessory dwelling unit, you can see the portion we're striking out, and we wanted to clarify here that this. If the work is involved. It's involved in accessory dwelling or your accessory dwelling unit, it's. If originally the ordinance has been had it written, we had said attached accessory dwelling unit. But state law does not differentiate between attached or detached. Basically. It's fire sprinklers are not, you know, as determined by the building code fire department, they they're not required. If for accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units, it doesn't differentiate attached. So we're recommending that, you know, minor correction be made to the ordinance to remove this type of deficiency where that. That changes made. And also with the amended attachment B. Amendments to chapter 10.05 of the zone of our current zoning title. Where we're updating the definitions of our development standards to quote include allowing additional ADUs. We would also add. Allowing junior ADUs to that language also, so those are just the two corrections that staff is recommending. So staff is recommending that the planning commission review the report and the ADU ordinance and recommends approval for final adoption by the city council. This concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions and comments.
Thank you, Sam. And who make some comment about this? Who wants to start? Commissioner Quay.
Oh, thank you. Um, there was something at the city council's meeting that Mayor. Oliver had mentioned. On the community outreach that there was some discrepancy on the numbers. Are the kind of one offset the other, and I can't find it right this minute. But it looks to me like how many people really were involved as a community? When I look at the numbers, it looks like so many of these questions that were asked and answers. Come out to 25, 20 on the questions, 20, 23. So does that mean that that few of people were really involved?
Well, the we had about 10 to 15 people come to. Different people come to the three workshops, so there's there was three community workshops. And this was the input received from the people that that showed up at the community workshops. So and it was just, it was the survey that we basically did and the feedback that we we got from. The the public that attended. Those workshops. Again, staff also looked at, you know, the type of the questions that we were getting from. The public at our our building counter, planning counter, when they were asking about ADUs and what they could do. That also went into developing the ordinances is is developing the ordinance in a way that it clarified a lot of the questions that were that were coming up. So, you know, questions about height and setbacks. And fire sprinklers and that information was taken into account as well. Ordinance, but the a lot of the public comment and feedback that we received. At the community workshops. Were 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 very, very sort of very similar to. The the feedback that we heard from commissioners and city council members. So many of the issues that they they had and that they were concerned about were also reflective. By the input that we received from the city council and planning commission.
Thank you, it's just amazing that we can come up with all these reports when. You know, you show these graphs, yet there's not that many people that were really involved.
Like, yeah, I mean, staff tried to, we we did do, you know, outreach and 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 had the flyers printed out and we did. Announce it on our website and. Did have it, you know, announced to try to try to invite people to come, we we actually also had one of the workshops. I believe I believe we had one of the workshops on the weekend to try to capture people that couldn't couldn't come during the week, so we had two during the week. And then we had one on the weekend. So that the idea being that maybe we would be able to get a larger crowd on the weekend, but pretty much the about the same amount of people came to the three workshops, about 15 to 20.
I'm not doubting that the city didn't do all their outreach, it's just amazing that there is so few people that. Participate on the beginning side of these items and.
The good thing that I'll I'll mention is that the the we we had, you know. Lower numbers like 15 to 20 people, but the good thing is that we did have a diverse representation of people at the community workshops, so.
Perfect.
An architect, we had an architect. Come come to the meeting, two several architects, two or three architects. We had a good cross section of demographics, so older long term residents of Millbrae that have lived here many years. Were able to provide good feedback and then people that have recently moved to Millbrae who who use public transportation. And commuted to jobs in other cities also provided their feedback and so we were able to capture a lot of. The the different concerns and issues of by the fact that we had sort of a diverse group of of people participating. Although you're you're correct, it was a smaller number than we would have hoped, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
I, if I may.
Ms. Joe?
Yes. First of all, well. I have a bunch, so I I just wanted to know, did we want to maybe take it topic by topic or something kind of order? Or did you want me to just go through my different questions for the whole thing?
Um, so. Are they in particular orders or particular part of the ordinance?
The staff report where it has that chart, so I thought maybe if you want to take it through that or I can I can stop along the way. I'm fine going whichever way, or I can just say everything that I want to say, but I figured that might be, it might be better to have some go in order. I'm fine going whichever way, or I can just say everything that I want to say, but I figured that might be, it might be better to have some go in order.
However, you prefer to do it. I think that's fine.
I'll just start going down. So I, I'm, my notes are coming from page five of the staff report if anybody, and then if anybody wants to stop.
That'd be great. Let me find it.
Yes, that's right. Okay.
That might be. Yep, page five, staff report, that chart. I think that chart was. So I'll, I'll start off by saying thank you so much to the staff because I know it's been a lot of work to put this together. And I think having it in a chart like this was great. It was very informative and um, easy to evaluate. And my second comment would be that um. A lot of, even though we do surveys and whatnot, ultimately, a lot of this is coming down to us from the state. So there's very. There is a limit to what, so what the state has mandated has limited what the cities can limit. So whether, and I think that's important to just be clear on for. The general public. Um, so starting off on that chart, I think the one I wanted to ask about was. The ADU location that it must be located within the rear half of the lot. Um, I don't think that's necessarily part of, I don't think that's a state requirement, right? So I think this is a, it looks like it's a um, city requirement. I'm a little depending, um, I might be open to having a little bit of flexibility on that. Having to be within the rear half of the lot and especially, or you could consider that there are some corner lots that we've been seeing corner lots lately. Where the front is officially one side, but the back, but when you actually, because of the address or the, the size of the lot. You end up having an awkward place where maybe a corner lot, the back is not really the back, it's more the side. So I think having maybe consider that a little bit and putting.
Yeah.
Putting some consideration to that where you might have a house where they have a lot more room on their side lot for whatever reason. And maybe having some flexibility that I, I might be open to that.
Okay, uh. I can address that, that, that's one of the issues that other cities along Peninsula have been working on. Um, and they've been considering revising their ordinance for that. Um, it's sort of tricky. Uh, the reason why Millbrae didn't uh, pursue that in this, the, this AD ordinance. Uh, at this time is because there, there are um, uh, issues as to. You know, the visibility of the, the, the ADU if it's placed uh, within uh, the side. Uh, setbacks. So, so right now, the, we're limited that the state allows four-foot side setbacks. So some corner lots uh, have really wide setbacks, so they have a sidewalk. Um, and the, that means that potentially a, a person could. Property owner could put their ADU uh, right up to like four feet of the sidewalk along the side of a corner lot. It would be very highly visible. Um, and it may uh, not really be compatible and fit with the. With, with the location of the existing primary dwelling. So one of the issues that came up that, you know, the, the public uh, feedback we received is that they wanted to see design compatibility. With the neighbor, uh, neighborhood, neighborhoods in Millbrae. And so uh, we felt that for design compatibility purposes and to protect privacy. Uh, that it should be uh, you know, limited to the rear. Uh, portion of the lot. Uh, now if there, i- i- and most uh. Most of the ADU applications that we've received are, you know, in- interior lots. Uh, we haven't had too many uh, applications for, for corner lots. But if this is an issue that, you know, that. Um, that comes up again or, or, you know, it becomes an issue, that's something that staff can revisit and look at. You know, potentially revising the ordinance, but at this time staff felt that. That the ordinance right now is addressing the primary concerns of, of the community commissioners and council. Um, and. The, the, the other issue is that Millbrae prides itself on um, it's, it's having it uh, well landscaped and, and. Uh, compatible front yard, front yard landscaping. And so. We, we felt that to, to make it clear, this AD ordinance should specify the location um, within the rear half of the lot.
And I'm sorry, you mentioned that some of the cities had something like this and they're looking to revise it is.
No, one of the cities um, and. Is exploring, uh, doing research and, uh, and exploring revising their ADU ordinance to potentially allow some ADUs. Within this uh, side setbacks of, of corner lots. Uh, so there was some interest of the community um, on, on this other opponent city. To, to be more flexible and allow some AD ordinances on the side lot. Uh, so they were exploring potentially. Revising or updating their AD ordinance to allow that.
Through the chair, I just want to make a one clarification. So um, that requirement, um, that requirement only applies to detached. Accessory dwelling units, not attached. And so by default, most um, properties have homes that are um, abutting the front setback. So uh, we naturally see detached accessory dwelling units in the rear yard, rear half of the yard anyway. So uh, we don't potentially see this as being um, a critical issue. Um, but we just wanted to make sure that, um, I wanted to make sure that, uh, that that is clear that it just applies to detached accessory dwelling.
Okay, Commissioner Wong, go ahead. Quick question?
Yes, I would agree that, um, you know, for a lot of.
Commissioner Wong, you've got a quick question?
Yes. Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I would agree that if a lot of these ADUs, uh, we have, uh, put this from the state to do ministerial review and fast track the projects. That, you know, by having this requirement for the backyard uh, in the rear part of the lot. Uh, would agree that wouldn't have minimal impacts on the neighborhood characteristics and uh, you know, visual impacts. Uh, to the design, to the architecture of the home. If they were to put, uh, were to relax that um, requirement for having it in the rear one-third of the lot. Then they could still push the, for their design, but would they have to go through planning commission review in order to. Have a variance from these requirements?
So, um, so to respond to that, um, the accessory dwelling units are ministerial. And uh, so that means that requires no um, judgment or review unless. There, with the state law requires that cities can't impose uh, four-area ratios, um, open space requirements, certain things that the city. Can't have discretion on. Um, and we were having the ADUs be located in the rear half of the yard. Right now, that's what we're proposing. If they can't, there, um, yeah, there wouldn't be. Um, I'm sort of relieved from that.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Joe, you were saying?
And, and that's fine. I just, again, I was just thinking about it because the whole issue of, you know, some corner lots, it probably won't come up that much. But I was, and I'm not expecting that people are, I'm not saying that we should say, go ahead and put it in the front yard. Um, I'm just wondering if there might be some way to provide some flexibility. Um, or even say the back two-thirds or something to make it for some of those lots that might be different. So that was just a thought. In terms of the, so another requirement going down to setbacks is the detached ADUs. Uh, that there's a minimum ten-foot. Requirement that it has to be separated from. The real, from the rest of the building. So I'm just kind of curious about that because on one hand, we're saying if it's an attached. Then you can be right up next to the building. And if it's detached, you need to be ten feet away. Is that my, am I getting that correct?
That's, but, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, that's correct. Uh, if it's, so if it's detached, it needs to be at least ten feet away. And that comes from our cur- uh, our existing municipal code. Exact accessory structure, especially building, it has to be uh, ten feet away from the primary dwelling unit. So we're be, this, the ordinance is consistent with that.
Okay, and I just had a question on that. So is that because of a fire code issue or is that? Is that something that there could be some flexibility on that part of it or not at all?
I think it's that, I mean, that's something that we can verify with a building official, a building department. But uh, staff, my, my understanding of that is that it's a state building code requirement. So. There, we may not have any discretion on that.
Okay, so that's fine. So again, it's just a question to, to see what, in my mind, I was like, okay, if it's, if it's an attached structure, you're fine. But if it's a detached, then now you need ten feet away. So just the kind of rationale behind that, I wanted to get more information on it. So. That would be good to know. Um, in terms of the building size. So I know that we, basically, we're going with a minimum of what the state is saying that we need to do in terms of the. The sizes of the ADUs themselves. Was there any thought in terms of allowing for, because the maximum is twelve hundred square feet? So allowing something that might be bigger on a large lot, like an oversized lot, was there any discussion on that or any recommendation? Right now, there's enough, it's regardless of the lot size, but. Is that something that? Could be considered?
That, that was suggested um, and looked at there. There aren't that many large lots at Millbrae. There, there, there are some up on the hills uh, that are fairly large. But. The majority of the, the lots are, they're about, you know, average around five thousand square feet in Millbrae. And so the majority of the ADUs applications that we've been getting are, you know, in that range. Um, the, the larger lots, the applications that staff has, they're, they're incorporating the ADU, they're attached. They're incorporating them into the house. What, we looked at sort of the size, I mean. Staff felt that twelve hundred was uh, was, was very large for an ADU. And, and the feedback that we got from commission in the public and the city council. Uh, was that they wanted it to be compatible with the, the neighborhood and the neighborhood character. Um, so there was a concern about ADUs being too large. And if we were allowed twelve hundred square feet, I think most of it was, the concern was on, you know, at smaller lot, like, you know, five thousand square foot lots, not large lots. We, we didn't really receive like feedback from residents on large lots saying they wanted to do twelve hundred square feet. So most of the um, ADUs that we've received um, as applications. Uh, range from, you know, eight hundred, eight hundred fifty square feet or less. And we felt that was a, a suitable size for an ADU. One, one way to visualize it is, so a two-car garage is four hundred square feet. So uh, we're allowing an eight hundred fifty square foot ADU, basically the size of like a four-car garage. It's, that's already pretty large. So. You know, you could argue maybe, you know, a twelve hundred square foot ADU uh, on a large lot might work. But, but usually on a, on a large lot, um, if they're gonna build that, something that large, the, the property owners is just wanting to build an addition. You know, they're gonna do an addition uh, or like an attached um, addition to their existing home. They, they're not necessarily gonna call an ADU, but, but that's something that, you know, staff's open to if like. In, in the future, if there's a need, if we receive, um, you know, the feedback from the public, if they want to build larger ADUs. That's something that, that I think, I mean, we could revisit, um, because there was some, some suggestion of maybe looking at that. Um, but as a, as a start, you know, to, to getting a Millbrae ADU ordinance, we felt that eight hundred fifty square feet was a good size. Um, that would basically. You know, be, be helpful for, for, for just the entire city of Millbrae, it would, it would apply.
And can I ask how many, how many applications have you had for ADUs? It doesn't have to be hundreds or tens or.
We've had, Rosco, uh, what'd you say, around twenty-eight?
How many have we had?
We, we've had about um, fifty.
Fifty, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, I mean, this is my concern because I, um, and I, I keep asking about, can we have some flexibility here and there because. AD ordinance, we've been asking for, for several years, and I know there's a lot of other stuff going on. So I'm just trying to. I, I, I would like to see, or I think it would be great to have an ordinance that can last to a certain degree. Where, you know, because we had, we've had other issues since I've been on the commission where we said, okay, well, we'll do it like this for now. And then we'll come back and revisit it if it doesn't work out. And none of those have been revisited for whatever reason. And I think, um, so my concern is, I, I just would. That's why I'm talking through these issues now because it's taken us a while to get here. And now that we're here. Um, I would love to be able to see an ordinance that has built in what we have. And we're talking about, you know, we're trying to base our feedback on fifty applications, on surveys of twenty people, twenty-five people. And I don't think that's, you know, I'd like, I'm trying to be more broad in a sense to, to be able to take on those different issues. Ahead of time rather than saying, well, we can revisit it to, you know, it's not, it's not gonna happen for a while is my feeling on it. So, so that's kind of my rationale on it.
Sure, um, Commissioner Joe, uh, so. The, we have, as you probably um, understand, we have very little wiggle room to deviate away from the state requirements. The maximum size uh, of an ADU state allows is twelve hundred square feet. Right now, we're proposing a maximum size of one thousand for. Up to one thousand square feet for more than one bedroom. The maximum that we could go to is one thousand two hundred. Um, and, and, you know, certainly should the commission decide that twelve hundred square feet is more appropriate for larger lots. We could, um, you know, the commission can, can direct staff to, um, to incorporate that into the ordinance as the recommendation to the council.
It, it might be, I don't know what the, my fellow commissioners or what they're thinking is on it, but um, I'm just thinking that if you have a, if you have a large lot. I, I understand that they're not the majority in Millbrae. And I'm not saying that everybody's gonna want to build a twelve hundred square foot home. But if somebody has a larger lot, maybe they want to build an ADU to accommodate, you know, their children or their parents. And they want to make it something that's a little bit, you know, a two-bedroom or something, can do to them. They want to build something that's a little bit more accommodating for them. I personally feel like I, I would be open to that. I'll put it that way.
So just comments that, um, you know, uh, from my research, went to a design workshop for ADU Samhail County. Talked to some of the uh, regional planners and county planners. They're thinking that, you know, this um, ADU laws and fast-tracking this, again, is a lot more easy to implement the ADUs, instruct them. Uh, it's not the big solution for, obviously, for the regional housing prices. They, they don't expect a lot of people to sign up, but it just helps uh, with providing a little bit more housing. Also some statistics, like in LA County, which is like ten million people. Uh, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, they had eighty and ninety applications for ADUs. In twenty seventeen, with the laws being passed, they had two thousand, nineteen hundred and seventy. In Oakland, they had thirty and ninety-nine in fifteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And then it uh, went to two hundred and fifty in twenty seventeen. So there is an increase. Um, I think that a lot of the planners told me that they don't expect this to be the catch-all solution. But there are communities, as we know, I think where there's homes. I think just to the north, like in Davie City, where there's design of the houses are like conducive for uh, developing units downstairs, like the, the dolder homes. And developing the whole second floor of the separate unit. Um, just a, just a couple of ones on that.
Commissioner Joe, are you finished with your comments earlier?
Uh, no, not yet, but I, I, quick, I don't have that many so more. So I guess the other thing is, um, in terms of compatibility, I, I feel like if we're requiring it in the back, you can have some flexibility in that. And I know it's ministerial approval, but just my personal, what I would say is it. And I know it's ministerial approval, but just my personal, what I would say is if it's in the back, you know, just because you have a Spanish Mediterranean in the front, doesn't have to be, you know, Mediterranean in the front, in the back, you know, there are ways to make it where it will look okay together. I, I don't think everybody's going to go wild with this to begin with, but I just feel like you could probably be a little more flexible than needed if you're not even going to see it. So that's, so I'll say that. And then I had a question about RENA numbers. Is our junior ADUs, do those also, are they included in RENA numbers or are they? Was it just the accessory, the main accessory?
JADUs are.
They are. Okay, great. And then, so, let's see. Okay. And then for a single family homes, this is not in the chart, but just wondering, I know for, it says for multifamily dwelling, for single family homes, is it allowed to do an ADU and a JADU? Yes.
Yes, that's correct. You're allowed one JADU and one ADU.
On a single family home lot?
Yes.
That's interesting. Okay. And then I know California law has it that the JAD, junior ADUs have an owner occupancy requirement. Do we, I didn't see that anywhere in our ordinance. Can we put that into our ordinance? Or can you tell me where it is? Because I was kind of flipping through back and forth.
What kind of residency requirement are you proposing? Either one of them or?
Statewide right now is, there is an owner occupancy requirement. And I'm just asking if it's incorporated into our ordinance? Or do we not have it just because we're assuming that California already mandates that? And personally, you know, California law keeps changing. So I'm proposing if we don't have it in there, that perhaps we should consider putting it into the ordinance, into the body of the ordinance. So if it ever does change where the state says, well, if they say you can't have an occupancy ordinance, we can't do anything about it. But if they say, well, it's up to the city, then at least we have that clear, you know, ordinance.
I believe it is, it is included in our ordinance. It's in section 10.05.3140. A5. So we've included the, the language from the state statute in that section.
In A5?
Is it, it's on page three of the ordinance?
Page three, page four?
Page four or page three?
Page four, so page four.
And then which item number?
Page five.
Five. And where does it say no owner occupancy? I mean, that it has to have owner?
This is prohibiting the sale.
Right. That's different from what I'm.
Yeah. So maybe we need to add clear language explaining that. Roscoe or Sam, do you want to weigh in on that please?
Yeah. I believe we do have it.
So if you could check on it, because if you go before, for accessory dwelling units, not the junior ones, it's very clear. So it says there's no requirement because of California law. So that there is no, until 2025, there's no requirement for a legal owner of the parcel to reside in either the primary dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. So that's clear for California law, whereas for the junior ADUs, it doesn't include that.
I understood that with the junior ADUs, you have to be there. It's an owner occupant.
That's what it should be, but it's not in the ordinance itself, is what I'm saying.
I don't know. I thought I saw it someplace.
I've seen it in the staff report and I've seen in the chart. And that's why it's a little confusing because I'm going back and forth, but I think the ordinance is what's going to last.
Read it in the order.
Yeah, so I'd love to know where it is because I've missed it.
Okay. I thought I read it.
So if you can check on it, I, I don't need an answer, but, but that would be a suggestion if, if it's not there or put it in the same section in that five, six, maybe make a, either make a section six.
Noted.
For owner occupancy for the short term. Oh, and then I just had a question about, have you, in your research with the cities, other cities, did you see anywhere where there was an affordability incentive built in?
Could you please repeat that, affordability?
An affordability incentive, affordable housing incentive built in at all? Because, you know, as we had our RENA report and our, you know, provision of housing in general, it's good that we have ADUs to bump up our numbers, hopefully over time as people get more accustomed to it. But is there, have you, did you see any cities that were providing some kind of an incentive for owners to provide affordable units or low income or?
Yeah. So Mr. Fielding can add to this, but he did a lot of research with regards to the neighboring cities and the peninsula and what incentives they do have or do not have. We have found that the cities typically do not have a financial incentive. We did find one jurisdiction outside of the peninsula, I believe it's in Napa, that provided loan assistance for the creation of ADUs. But outside of streamlining and some fee reductions, we did not find that cities along, that's all, at least in our research, that, that had a financial incentive.
Thank you. I just thought that would be interesting to look into, just so we can, if we could find a way to increase our.
Yeah, the, the city of San Carlos, their, the, their staff there did some research. And they found some cities, but not, not nearby, in, in other areas. The city of Napa offers $50,000 loans for JADUs with affordability requirements that the owner rent to a household with at least one person employed in Napa County. And they, they had, the income does not exceed 80% of AMI. County of Santa Cruz partnered with Habitat for Humanity. And then looking at a state, there's a city of Denver offered $25,000 loans. County of Marin offers 35,000 loans with an affordability requirement. But as far as along the peninsula, San Jose County and, and along the peninsula here in San Francisco, there, there aren't any cities at this time that, that, that are offering, you know, specific affordability incentives that we found. We didn't find any.
If I may, this is Elisa Tierney. I just wanted to add, this is a while ago, when we first started it about a year ago, as Sam was indicating. We did our due diligence on various cities at that time. And this is before the spate of laws that the state initiated that might have changed a number of things. But one of the things that we were looking at was exactly this, was the incentives that various jurisdictions might offer to somebody who might flip the balance toward an affordable unit. At that time, one of the key players was Santa Cruz, that was allowing greater sizes. So they had a limit on the size limits, and, and forgive me, I'm not quite sure what it was. I'll conjecture it was maybe around 1,000 feet. And they were allowing jurisdictions, they were allowing individuals to have a greater size unit in the event that they agreed to some measure of time that they would restrict them for affordable. Another one, I believe, was Redwood City. And I know Sam has looked into this since then, but my understanding, and I, forgive me, I'm not, if I'm not remembering it exactly, but I know a number of jurisdictions started looking into incentives for green building and affordability. So those are the two areas. And my recollection is that Redwood City was offering incentives if individuals, you know, stepped up in certain ways. And, and I, I just, my recollection is that it too, at the time in Redwood City, was with affordability restrictions. But then even Redwood City had to overhaul their ordinance in response to the state spate of law changes. So Sam's due diligence is more up to date.
Okay, thank you. I just, I think that would be an interesting component to have, have considered, just again, because we need to come up with more affordable housing. And if there was a way to, I'm surprised that San Jose doesn't have anything because they've, they've been very active about providing incentive or assistance for affordable housing. So I'm, I'm surprised that they haven't done anything on that. I think, I think that's it I have for now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Joe. Okay. Anybody else wants to make some comments about the proposed ordinance? Raise your hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, through the chair, can I have one more?
I'm sorry, yes.
In the ordinance, on the, on the description here, at the very front page of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Can you add a, for the description for the junior ADU, the fact that it needs to have a kitchen? I know it's in the description later, but I think it would be good to, it's supposed to have, and I think it's called an efficiency kitchen. And since we're doing a description of, on the first one for the accessory dwelling unit, and it says it needs to have the cooking and sanitation and all that. And then the, in the description definition for the second paragraph for the junior ADU, I think it would be good to add that because it does address sanitation. And then we can say, you know, include the fact that it does require the efficiency kitchen. That's my suggestion.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Anybody else? Who else wants to comment on this?
Just a question. This was just questions at this point. We'll have discussion later. Right? Because there might, there might be a public comment in between.
Oh, yeah, that's true. There might be a public comment in between. So do we have any public comment as far as the ADU ordinance goes, spread it out? So do we get a plan?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry, sorry about that. There is no additional public comments at this time.
There's no public comment as far as the AD ordinance goes, okay?
That is correct.
Sorry. Earlier this evening, you said there was one public comment that came in. What was it for?
When, and no, no, I have not received any.
She said not, not one public comment came in. Heard that and I was like, wait, what?
There is not any
Okay.
public comments.
I mean, I guess we can, we can ask the question to the staff first, and then we can have a discussion afterwards, Ms. Davis.
All right.
That's what you like?
Sure. I'm just, you know, just going with normal, kind of the way it goes, but it's always different on Zoom, so just checking.
Yeah. Okay. Your questions, Ms. Davis? No question, Ms. Davis?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
This, since I couldn't see ever. Okay, yes, Commissioner Wall, please.
So in the distribution of memos and articles, the staff distributed an attachment A, which is the proposed accessory dwelling ordinance. And then they also submitted attachment B amendments to the Millbrae municipal code. Can staff explain a little bit of the purpose of distributing this attachment B? And how that, there's a lot of, I guess, excerpts from attachment B about the uses, permitted uses of R1, R2, R3, such as care facilities, places of worship, schools, parks, utility services, wireless communication facilities and bed and breakfasts. So are we saying that if there's a church that's an R2, then it can have a, a ADU? Or if it's a bed and breakfast, it can have an ADU also? Because that seems like for bed and breakfast, seems like that would defeat the purpose of having rental more than 30 days if it's a bed and breakfast and they have an ADU in the back.
The, the attachment B amendments to chapter 10.05 zoning, title 10 of the Millbrae municipal code. This is, that's to update where accessory dwelling units are permitted. And so our current code has a table of permitted uses. And what staff is proposing there is to add the junior accessory dwelling units and accessory dwelling units to that table for where they are permitted in those zones. And then also within the descriptions, those zones are one, R2, R3, commercial, the development standard zone descriptions. That also defines what's permitted use and what are conditional uses within the code. So those need to be amended to reflect the new ADU ordinance permitting junior ADUs and ADUs in the, in those zones. That is pretty much determined, defined by the state. But we, we don't have discretion on that. And the, the state has basically, in the California ADU state regulation law, said that you shall allow ADUs in these zones. So that's what needs to be updated and reflected in our current municipal code. And also, you know, reflecting that we're now going to be adopting a Millbrae ADU ordinance.
So in attachment B, they also states that there's commercial, calls out commercial zoning and downtown improvement area zoning. And then we added that there's accessory dwelling unit. So are we saying that ADUs are also permitted in commercial and downtown improvement area zoned lots?
So, yes, they, my understanding is, yes, they would be allowed their, you know, that, that would be an allowed use.
But that's only if it meets the requirements, like back one third of the lots and so forth. It would have to meet all the same design standards as the residential units with the side setbacks and 1,000 square foot of backyard space and so forth. Otherwise, would the ADU?
That doesn't need to meet, there's no 1,000 square feet of open space required anymore. That's not a requirement for the ADU. So it's.
Side setbacks, four feet?
The, yeah, the setbacks are four feet from all property lines. You know, that, those are what the state requirements are. I think, you know, the, the, the ADUs are allowed in those zones. And for, for like a downtown improvement area site or down a commercial location, that they, they would need to meet the, the development standards of the, of the zone. But then basically would, would, they would need to comply with the state, with the California state regulation is for ADUs.
So just for an example, say that someone had a prefabricated ADU, like a kind of a, you know, standard design, something that you might drop in, in the backyard, little housing unit or fab unit. Is that possible that you, they can drop one of those little fab units, like in a commercial zone in the back of the, or in the commercial property?
I think we'd look at our compatibility, design compatibility guidelines and see whether it's meeting those, those requirements. Uh, and see whether it's meeting those those requirements as it's defined the ordinance.
Commissioner Joe, I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong. Uh, your question regarding the um. Permitting ADUs and JDUs and zoning districts other than residential such as commercial and DIA. So. The provisions of state law require that the um. Jurisdiction provide for the creation of ADUs in area zone to allow single family or multi-family. Dwelling residential use by right and. Um, so our zoning districts are one through three allows residential zone as residential uses by right in those three. Zoning districts. With respect to uh commercial zoning districts and the DIA. Those uses, uh, those residential uses are um. Conditional uses in which case um the city um and and correct me if if I'm wrong. The city um may uh may. Only restrict the permitted permitting residential ADUs and residential zoning districts by right, not as a conditional use.
Yeah, it's just that from all the research, uh, articles, news articles and other city ordinances or their their AD ordinance, I haven't seen any. Of the other cities talk about ADUs and commercial zone properties or. Business district properties kind of on.
Yeah, um, so because. So multi-family dwellings in the DIA and commercial zoning districts are conditional uses. Um, the city has the ability, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, Ms. Sue, uh. To limit the ADUs into only residential uh or zones that are zoned. To permit residential by right. Which means, in other words, that um not in the C or DIA. Because those zoning districts uh require conditional use permit.
Correct, that's my understanding.
So to clarify then, if they wanted to put an ADU in the commercial zone lot, then they'd have to get a special use permit for that?
It just won't be a ministerial process, right? So there'll be a conditional use and that comes to planning commission, is that right? Roscoe?
Um, right now, we're proposing that um will be. We we could say that um we're allowing ADUs in only R1, 2, and 3 zoning districts.
So no ADU at all in those downtown improvement district?
Um, so if if a multiple family dwelling um would like to create an ADU. Uh, multi-family dwellings are allowed to create ADUs. They would have to first obtain a conditional use permit by the planning commission. Um, and then upon securing that conditional use permit, then they would be allowed to um add an ADU to the property. Um, as ministerial uh permit.
Um, so let me just clarify that. Um, so let's say, for example, someone, you know, tried to develop a mixed-use building in downtown. Right? That contains maybe four residential unit and one commercial down below, for example. Yes, right? Let's say they got approved, they build it, it's a five unit mixed-use building. And then now they want to turn maybe a portion of that commercial into an ADU. Would that be allowed? Would that be minister? Zero, or they would have to come back?
The the entitlement would be for conditional use permit to allow the multi-family residential. That would have to come first. Once they secure that.
That's a separate, that's the beginning of it.
That's correct. Once they secure that entitlement. Um. They could submit permits um for an ministerial over the counter permit, if you will, for um accessory dwelling units. Provided that it meets the provisions in the ADU ordinance. Um, and by state law, and what we're proposing in our ordinance is that. Um, uh, the multi-family units can have um up to, I think, two or twenty-five percent of the dwelling units. Um, uh, as ADU by right. So if 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 a property or a a property owner in the DIA or commercial zoning district. Would like to to avail of that, uh, the proper process, which we get the conditional use permit first and then um obtain the ADU permits.
Okay. And then the ADU permit, you know, later on would be ministerial, assuming that the first part of it, which is the conditional use for to build a building to begin with, is already done.
Right.
Okay. So that's your question, Commissioner Wong?
I'd just like to state that it uh. If there's a mixed use, commercial development building, then that might make sense to add an ADU ministerially or. Um. Go through the process to obtain permit to do that. But it wouldn't make sense, for example, if there was like a. Utility lot like that, I think it was PG&E lot, uh, on Millbury Avenue across from the. Uh, senior home complex to drop in the. ADU in the parking lot there or like a gas station or some other commercial.
No.
Uh, completely commercial to drop in the ADU.
Yeah, and our and our understanding is that you would have to, zoning zoning would have to allow the ADU by, um, I'm sorry, allow um residential uses by right. For for the ADU to be um.
So. Yeah, so a bigger question would be, and I'm guessing the answer is no, is that let's say you have a a commercial building. That is a storefront, for example, along Broadway, for example, that it's currently, you know, being used as a commercial space. Um, then you want to carve out a portion of it in the rear, for example, you where the building in itself. Roscoe?
Um, you you broke up there, so we lost the last probably five seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me rephrase. Let's say there's a commercial building. Say, for example, a commercial building on Broadway, for example, it's a storefront, right, twenty-five by a hundred. Um, and it's been used as a, you know, maybe a grocery store, maybe it's a retail, whatever that might be. And then now the owner decides to cut out maybe, you know, five minutes graffiti in the rear to use it as an ADU for for residential purposes where it's previously not being used. For residential throughout the whole building. So I guess that ADU would not.
So the way that. I I hear, I hear you, yeah. The way the way that we have the ordinance um written and structured is that. Under uh section ten point oh five point three one three zero, which is page two. Of the um attachment A. Locations allowed, so A provides that accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are permitted in uses. Are permitted uses in all residential zones and residential mixed-use zones. Junior accessory dwelling units may be developed on any legally created zone. Um, property allowed to allow single family or multi-family dwelling use and shall be located within the walls of an existing or proposed primary dwelling. So for junior ADUs, it has to be within a proposed or existing primary dwelling. Further, C. Says that an accessory dwelling unit may um be in any of the following places on a legally created lot. That is zoned to allow single family or multi-family residential use and contains a proposed or existing primary dwelling. Um, attached to. An existing or proposed primary dwelling located within the walls of an existing proposed primary dwelling. So on and so forth, so. Given what we have written and and provided in this ordinance, you would have to have um an existing primary dwelling. Um, or existing multi-family dwelling in order to have an ADU.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Any other question from anybody? Anybody want to raise your hand? Mr. Wong?
Um, just again, so clear about the process of where we're going with this um and the schedule for uh finalizing this um ordinance. Um, I guess we're giving comments back. Uh, if we have specific comments, maybe we can submit them in in writing if that helps. And then I guess you guys are going to revise this, or do you have to take it to the city council also for approval? Or to um, who who ultimately approves of this ordinance?
So the um, the action um tonight is, should the commission decide to recommend that city council. Um, review and adopt this ordinance, is that um the commission would. Um, if the commission decides to move forward with it, we could um. Provide for recommendation with um certain edits or as is. Um, um, you know, or if there are substantial um significant material changes, um, you know, we could, we could work on those changes and go back to the commission at another hearing. Um, given, given what was discussed in some of the minor kind of editorial uh changes to the proposed ordinance. Um, we could um make a recommendation or the commission can make a recommendation that um the city council. Um, uh, review and make a recommendation to adopt this ordinance, um, given following uh edits to the proposed ordinance.
Okay. Well, I guess, you know, we have to depend on what kind of discussions we have after this. Um. Ms. Quip, do you have any questions?
I do not. Um, I definitely feel that it is correct. In the fact that the thousand square feet would be the maximum, and I would definitely go along with that. Um. All the homes that are even in, maybe not Meadow Glen, but in Lomita Hills. These homes were built um under a thousand square feet and they were three bedrooms and one bath. And families lived in them very comfortably. So. Uh, when you're putting a house behind a house. Basically, I would tend to think a thousand square feet is more than adequate. Um, I hear sizes of a very large lot. Um. The amount of this very large lot or the size of this very large lot has not been discussed, but. Um, that being said, I I think um Mr. Fielding said that. There is not that many that are very large lots that could accommodate. Um, that excess size of an ADU. Let's keep in mind that we're also talking about the environment. And the more we fill up. The dirt with buildings, we are losing so much of the environment. And so I tend to stay with the smaller size. As it is uh listed here this evening. Um, you can definitely be very, very comfortable. A family with two bedrooms could have. Two children and be very comfortable in that size. So I I would be. Very inclined to accept the numbers that are here um in this ordinance. Tonight. Actually, I think you did a wonderful job.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Quip. Anybody else have um any questions for the staff or should we open up for discussions? Okay, no, still no questions. Anybody want to go first? You know, might be a discussion, maybe a motion? Ms. Davis?
So. I think this is fabulous. I think it's done a remarkable job of. Creating the thoughts of the council, the planning commission, as well as the public to um. Customize the ordinance for Millbrae in the limited areas that we can. The state law is pretty prescriptive. So I think the, you know, staff has done a great job on that. Um, I too am done at a thousand square feet. My house is a thousand square feet. My whole house. It's it's plenty big for to be a house behind a house.
Are you sure you don't need an ADU for your cats?
Well, that would be a little annex maybe, but you know, they don't need a thousand square feet. They've already got mine. Um. What else did it some people say? I mean, Jean's edit to add the efficiency kitchen in the definition sounds good. Um. Jean mentioned about flexibility on design. I think the word we're using compatible is sufficiently. Vague. That um it doesn't have to, compatible doesn't mean matchy-matchy. That she's right, if it's behind the house, that there could be some slight design. Variety between the main house and the accessory. So I think that word's vague enough. To offer that kind of stability. Um. I'm looking at my notes here. Oh, I just have, I guess it maybe it's a question. Um, I didn't realize it was might be a question. Uh. In terms of approval, we have sixty days to approve, but will we be seeking to approve these faster than sixty days when we can? Just curious for the public.
Sixty days from when?
From when they, when they've got a complete application ministerially, if we do nothing, it's passed. So but are we trying to proactively pass them sooner than sixty days if somebody makes an application? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, cool. Then. Um. I like it a lot. As is.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be happy to make the motion uh to um pass this on if there's something that someone saw that. Um, actually has some typographical errors that can be corrected. Otherwise, I make a motion that we um approve of. The ordinance and move it to the city council. Um, I think as quickly if we do it, the better off we are.
I have some more comments, I'm afraid, to uh share and discuss and like would like to proceed with the discussion.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Wong?
Okay, so it sounds like it's getting late. We want to make it to short, to the point. Um. It's great. We are providing housing and making accommodating these state laws to accommodate the ADUs. Again, it's not the complete solution, so in City of Millbrae, we're planning some very large projects to provide additional identity housing. Uh, for this, though, uh. The neighborhoods and the residences, what I'm most concerned about, the the R1, R2. Mostly R1 properties and making sure that these neighborhoods. Uh, you know, maintain their character and don't all turn into like duplexes and R2, you know, so this could essentially. Make every R1 zone property and R2 with two residences on each property. So what we want to do is. Uh, ensure that if people go through with these ADU developments. That it is truly used for an ADU purpose. And so I want to make sure that the city staff is very tight on the definition of ADU. So a couple of comments to that point. It's good that uh ADU should have separate entrance. Apart from the primary structure, so I think that's in both of them. The uh. JDU language, it has provisions that there's the kitchenette. In the property for attachment one, it lists out uh that there should be a. Um. Kitchen accessories, but we need to make sure that that's missing in the ADU portion of the requirements. It doesn't specify that there is a kitchen requirement in there unless I'm missing a page. And we should have clear definition that that kitchen should include a sink. Uh, counter with cooktops or cooking uh features. And refrigerator. So what we're trying to do is trying to make sure that someone doesn't skirt the rules and. Put in a fake annex, creating kind of a sort of a McMansion and calling it an ADU, but we want to make sure that that ADU is used for. Potential apartment for rental use. Okay, so I make sure we have that. And then bathroom specification should must uh specify that we should have. Toilet, sink and shower for the uh larger units, ADU units. Uh, for the JDU, obviously, they can have the shared bathroom. Uh, for the uh JDU, obviously, they can have the shared bathroom sink with the primary structure. And if we're having ADU, I think it should be very clear definition that the ADU should have these features to make it a livable. Um, unit for separate occupants. Uh, the other thing too is that um uh should have utility, should have power, uh should have insulation, should meet code. I'm thinking that if the primary structure, uh again, I'm not sure how much they can fast track it, but we want to make sure that the. Primary structure and the homeowner, uh their home, the primary structure is meeting code. If if the primary structure is not meeting code. If it's a foreseen hazard or substandard unit, they shouldn't be allowed to build a second unit. Uh, you know, I'm not accusing of anybody anybody in particular, but we don't want to have. You know, dilapidated housing and and buildings and substandard construction. So uh, you know, if there's provisions at all that we can have the primary structure meet code. If this, you know, ADU or JDU, make sure it meets code, for example, the insulation, power. Uh, any utilities and plumbing. Um, you know, in the ordinance, I believe it says that. There could be an extension granted for uh units, existing units that don't meet code. To have a five-year provision to bring it up to standards. Uh, if that's correct, so we need to make sure that the city has language that. Unless it's unless the city deems it uh significant health. Or safety risk. So if, you know, it's good that we have provisions, you know, there's a lot of. Probably units out there that uh may have been not permitted that people build.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Yes, uh sorry, other staff here, Sam Fielding on section ten point oh five point thirty one seventy. C. Uh, specifically talks about um the. Making sure that the building, you know, official determines. That that there's any violation that it needs to be protected to uh corrected to protect health and safety. I think a lot of a lot of the the. Things that you're mentioning here uh are included in the in the ordinance and are also. Included as as requirements for the building code. So building code, fire code, those those requirements still apply. Uh, with this ADU ordinance.
Yeah, I may need to look at the language carefully because it says that violations can be delayed up to five years.
Yeah.
Identification.
This is, we we don't have, the city doesn't have much discretion in this area. This is. Like dictated to us from the California State AD uh ADU laws. So the this is incorporated. And as I say in the beginning of the presentation. The 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 Millbrae ADU ordinance. Um, is designed to to comply with the current California ADU ADU laws and regulations. So.
Yes, yes, I get to note on that. Uh, you know, I wouldn't think that would be such an extreme example, but for example.
Yes.
Look at the Oakland warehouse, the Ghost Ship warehouse where many people died in that because it was substandard and there was a fire hazard. People couldn't get out. You want to protect the city to make sure that they don't allow something. It's substandard that's going to catch on fire and then the city gets sued and uh people lose lots of life.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I I think there's a certain level of minimum requirement that we're going to have, right? In terms of safe and healthy, you know, safe and healthy standard. Um, you know, there there's a lot of mentioning about other stuff that may or may not necessarily be. Um, okay, so let me just back up a little bit. I think the the ADU ordinance is designed to um make it easy. For um, you know, these ADUs to be developed in a in a in a expedient and economical manner. Okay, so you know, as far as building code wise, I think minimum safety standard has to be met, obviously. You know, there's not enough exit, there's not enough light and air. Obviously, you cannot make a living unit. You know, out of a garage, for example, unless there's efficient, you know, electricity and power and and light and air. Uh, whereas, you know, there are other things that might be, you know, the the building might meet building code previously. That may not meet the the current building code when the house was built, you're back in the sixties, for example. But the the law should not require the uh the creation of ADU mandating the original building to be brought up to the current code. Just because of that reason, right? But obviously, I I do agree that there's a certain amount of. Um, minimum health and safety requirement had to be in place, you know, secondary exit, light and air, for example. So those are the things that um I think it it would be prudent to have, right? Does that make sense? Sorry, Ms. Joe, you were going to say something?
Oh, I sorry, I I was just going to say that I think that this, the way that it's written is pretty clear and it does.
Yeah.
Even the exception, that five-year exception, it's not talking about health and safety. It's talking about, so it's actually saying if they determine that it's not a health and safety issue, then. The exception. So I think with the building code that we have, you know, with other things, I don't think we're. And the way that it's written, it does have that protection already in there, and I think that's clear enough.
And and yeah.
So for example, if the building was like a um accessory unit in the back formerly used for storage, but then now. And then it maybe has low ceiling or tripping hazard over the doorstep, then that could still be allowed under this. Uh, for the next five years until the point where it's brought up to code and standard then. That's what we're saying.
No, that's, I don't think that's what we're saying, but you know, fam, maybe Sam can clarify it, but I would imagine the approval to produce that ADU. Could be expedited, could be expedited and be a ministerial process, but the construction of it will still have to meet building code. That's my understanding. Is that right, Mr. Fielding? You muted.
Yes, uh, that's that that's my understanding. Um, the the building official, you know, when we receive a. Uh, an ADU application and especially when it's, you know, confer conversion of, say, um. Uh, uh, a detached. Garage in the rear of a lot. They're now going to convert it to an ADU. The building official will go out and inspect. Um, that the existing site and, you know, with the proposed plans. And to make sure it meets the minimum requirements for building code, building uh building code and safety, health and safety. Um, and fire uh requirements. So they and and if. The there need to be changes, revisions to the plans to meet that, that will be a comment on the on the ADU application.
Right. So I, you know, I just want to be clear that this this these ordinance is basically the provision at which we will issue the permit. For the ADU application, right? But they still need to go through, you know, the 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 plan, they still need to go through.
Yes.
Once, once they receive the permit, they still need to go through the building inspection to ensure that the construction is up to code. To all safety standard, right? So this just gives you the permit, doesn't give you the subsequent occupancy for you to move in immediately.
But I mean, that's not what it says here in uh ten five three thirty one seventy C. It says that if uh. Built before January first, twenty twenty, uh, the owner receives an notice, correct the violation. Then the violation and enforcement can be delayed up to five years. So in the meantime. Person can be using that as a ADU for five years until the point.
The thing is that this ordinance, it's about granting a permit to create the ADU. Not to not to give you a final inspection completion on the ADU. There's a difference between the two, Commissioner Wong. Right? So, you know, as part of inspections as you go forward, they still need to ensure that the space that you're creating leads all safety. Right, Sam?
Uh, yes.
One second, Davis.
Yes, the the. When when reading uh section ten point oh five point thirty one seventy C. The the main point there is that the the application will be granted if the building official determines that correcting the violation is not necessary to protect health and safety. So.
So there's some leeway.
This could be a another type of violation that doesn't have anything to do with the ADU.
Right, so they have discretion in there for them to make a disjudgment call.
Right, right. And and there's still the the discretion, the building officials still. Can visit, will visit the site and make sure that it 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 meets the 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 minimum, you know, building code requirement, the requirements. As right here. So I think that, again, this is a a way to to facilitate um. Uh, ADUs that the 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 state was looking at to streamline the process and facilitate.
Got it, yes.
Possible process for ADUs, but uh. At the same time, that they 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 didn't want to see uh potential minor violation. Um, holding up the approval of an ADU. So I think that's what the intent was.
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Got it. Thank you. Ms. Yes.
There's a couple of things. I just want to remind us all that. This is the ADU ordinance and it sits amongst the rest of our already existing laws and it's meant to be compatible with the state laws. So it comes along like everybody else has been saying that it comes along with already existing building codes and all that. The part that Commissioner Wong is referring to right now says for things built before January first, twenty twenty. This is, I think, meant to take into consideration the things that already exist. The people that built stuff a long time ago already have basically like a junior ADU in the back, uh, part of their house somewhere. And it's to let that have a a little gap if there's something not quite right with it. But of course, you know, health and safety come first and we have a professional staff, a huge team of people who will be checking these plans and checking the site. And I'm not worried that. Substands or things are going to be built. I have faith in our staff to get this done and these laws are. Meant to help us do that. That's what this ordinance is going to do.
Yeah, if I could just add to that through the chair, um. Commissioner. Commissioner Davis is correct. Um, the this specific provision says that. Um, under subsection C, the owner of an accessory dwelling unit that was built before. January one, twenty twenty. So this was referencing any you built prior to the new regulations.
Okay.
Okay, just a last couple of things. So again, emphasizing my point that to clarify the definition of ADU includes, you know. Specific features such as a toilet, sink, in the bathroom, shower.
Yeah, I think.
Kitchen has.
Is there?
Yeah, okay, we get to call that out and then.
Those are in included in the in the definitions right at the beginning of the of the ordinance. So it spells out uh what an ADU uh. It shall include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation on the same parcel that the same family. Or a multifamily dwelling is or will be situated. And the ordinance also does uh. Um, re- require that both there be a separate entrance for the JADU and the uh the accessory dwelling unit. They both have a separate entrance.
Right, so I'm saying that that's not good enough, that there needs to be specific definitions, for example, like cooking. Uh, facilities should be separate. I've seen other uh flats, studios, etc., where people had to do their cooking in the bathroom. You know, put a little hot plate in the bathroom sink and that's like a sanitation hazard. You shouldn't be cooking in your bathroom with the dirty. Dishes and washing your hands and using the bathroom there. So specific details. Another city has ordinances also that call some of these features out also to make it a legitimate kitchenette or kitchen or bathroom. The last last point I'd like to make is that um. Uh, as Catherine mentioned, the size of the units, eight hundred feet is a pretty big size. Uh, from my uh research here, had some numbers that specified the sizes of. Units in San Francisco. So a lot of the units in San Francisco are are far less than. The average averaged one-bedroom apartment or flat in San Francisco is less than thousand square feet. Uh, there it is. Uh, four hundred and eighty-eight, according to SF Curbed Survey. Four hundred and eighty-one bedroom, the units in San Francisco. Two hundred and ninety were less or greater equal to five hundred square feet, hundred and fifty were greater than seven hundred square feet. A minimum was two hundred and twenty square feet. Uh, I propose that even reducing it more for. Uh, there's a listing in there in the ordinance that says that should be no more than fifty percent of the primary residents. I suggest reducing that down to thirty-three percent. So for example, a fifteen hundred square foot house, you could have a five hundred square foot. Uh, ADU for a twenty-five hundred square foot house, you could have, that would go up to your your eight hundred square foot. Uh, I'm just trying to maintain proportion so that it's not essentially duplex. If you have one unit and the other unit's fifty percent of that size, that's pretty massive in relationship to the other one. It's not really a so-called granny flat, could be ADU, but I'm trying to create. The environment that it's more of a a secondary unit rather than uh almost a duplex. If the one's a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom primary house and the second one's a two-bedroom, one-bath primary secondary house. That's almost like a duplex rather than an ADU. But again, that's. Subject to discussion. Fifty percent seems kind of large to me.
Sorry, Ms. Davis, you were going to say something?
Um, I'm assuming that our city attorney has read this ordinance and is okay with the definitions. I I think this is probably standard when you describe an ADU as for having living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation. I think that is a totally adequate definition of an ADU and um. What was the last part?
Size.
Size.
Size. Isn't the fifty percent in the state law? Steph.
I mean, we we could be more effective if we choose to, but you know, it's up to us to make that determination, how big we allow them to be. But is that, but your question is whether it's fifty is uh it's state law. Is is that true, Roscoe?
Uh, yeah, that specific provision um was the language was taken straight from the state law. So it kind of reading um six fifty-eight fifty-two point two, which is of the California code. A local agency made by ordinance provide for the creation of accessory dwelling units in area zones to allow single-family or multifamily dwelling residential use. Um, the ordinance shall do all of the following. And then require that the accessory dwelling unit apply with. Um, if there is an existing primary dwelling, the total floor area of an attached accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed fifty percent. Of the existing primary dwelling.
Yeah, I, you know, personally, I I'm not too hung up on the percentage. I mean, the state law states fifty percent. You know, some houses are existingly, you know, inherently big, some houses are inherently small. For example, in the status house, it's a thousand square feet, you said, you're.
It is.
Petite.
Right. So, you know, at fifty percent, it's only five hundred square feet, right? If I were to limit that to thirty or thirty-three percent, that would be like the three hundred square feet ADU and that would be like a junior studio. Uh, I mean, not that it doesn't work. I mean, I built, you know, studio unit that is a, you know, three hundred square feet and it's quite comfortable. Probably. Um, but then, you know, I I, you know, I don't feel one way or another, whether or not we should reduce that from the fifty percent, just I think. You know, some, you know, there might be some flexibility. Um, there might, we might want some flexibility to certain development. There are inherently smaller houses and yet by virtue of adding more square footage and creating an ADU. The percentage might be a little bit, you know, greater than the main house. So I I wouldn't be too worried about that personally. I don't know how to how the commission feels about it.
Yeah, I would.
Sorry, Ms. Joe.
Um, yeah, I would agree. I think the fifty percent is fine. And um just to keep in mind again that we're going with state mandate. So they're saying there are minimums that we have to, you know, we have to be able to allow. So. Stricted by that, and I think the ordinance is written in that light. Um, going back to the kitchen thing, there is a description in the ordinance about what a kitchen entails with the kitchen counter. Top for cook prep and cabinets and all of that in there. And I think sanitation facilities is fine. I don't think you need to say it has to have a toilet and a sink. I I think people understand what sanitation facilities incorporate. And um as Commissioner David said, we do have a building department. It is all, does have to be done with by code. We do have a staff that will look at the plans and, you know, if there's nothing in there for that, you know, kitchenette. If there's no provision for that, they will know that. So we're not going to have people preparing food in the bathroom. So I think, you know, I I really feel like it it has been written well and um I I think it's just.
Ms. Davis, you were going to say something?
I'm fine up to fifty percent.
Hey, got it. Ms. Quick.
What happened to my motion?
I'd like to second it.
Your motion is still on the table.
And I second it.
That was the second.
We're on discussions.
We can continue to discuss after a second, but I have seconded the motion.
We'll receive your second duly.
Okay.
I I would ask if you can for the motion, at least have that the couple of amendment, like have review to.
So you want to modify that, you want to modify that motion, Ms. Joe?
At the at the kitchen. Leave, I said, subject to some of those little items that we discussed previously, absolutely. But.
Wait, can we spell them out? Sort of stop right now. At least the highlights.
For me, the only ones really are the, everything else was more question, but the only one is maybe for the description of the junior accessory dwelling unit to add in the kitchenette, the efficiency kitchen. And then the other one was.
So I'm sorry, before you get that, so when you say the efficiency kitchen, could you be a little bit more elaborate about the word?
Is defined somewhere else.
Identified in on page five later on in the ordinance with junior accessory dwelling units. So I keep holding my sheet. So it's already described in there. So I think I just, it just needs to have that terminology included into the definition at the very front.
Okay, that's fine.
And then the other thing is just to make clear that it is, there is an owner occupancy requirement for the junior ADUs. And I I believe staff said it might be in there somewhere.
Commissioner Joe, someplace I saw that.
So if if it's already in there, totally fine, but I didn't, I I didn't get an answer from staff where it was. So if it's not in there, to just please incorporate that.
I totally agree with you.
Okay, fair enough.
I can submit my written comments, but again, the kitchen floor area kitchen section described is described in the in the JADU, but it's not included in the ADU section.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Wong, what were you saying?
That's again, the kitchen description is included in the section on JADU, but not included in the ADU section.
I believe that has to do with at the very, I'm sorry, I may through the chair. Beginning definition, it does say that for ADUs, they have to have a permanent provision for the eating and cooking and all of that. Whereas with the junior ADUs, it can be a little bit smaller. So that's why they're identifying it that way. Like, that's my reading of it. I don't know, maybe staff has.
Can the staff point out the kitchen requirement and the ADUs or the Commissioner Wong's questions is answered?
We could, we could further clarify the JADU definition to add kitchen, provision for kitchen facilities.
No, when I talk about the ADU, we're talking about the ADU itself. Commissioner Wong was saying that the ADU ordinance itself, not the JADU, the ADU ordinance itself didn't specify that a kitchen is required.
All right, there's provisions for a kitchen sink, kitchen counter, refrigerator, any of that. Cook top, just cooking, which could be taken as just a hot plate.
But I think.
I don't think so.
Include permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking. So those permanent provisions would.
Yeah.
In the kitchen.
Okay. Sorry, Ms. Quick, you were going to say something?
Generally, when there's an accessory building unit and you're going up to eight hundred square feet, you're going to have a kitchen in there that makes sense. I would think it's coming here.
And and through the chair, oftentimes when when in in order for property owners, homeowners to utilize the the benefits of the ADU ordinance, they would have to provide these facilities, these kitchen facilities and bathrooms. So the 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 state allows the cities to provide for more lenient development standards for ADUs and JADUs. So it would benefit them to add these facilities and staff to make sure that they they have these facilities in there in order for them to to avail of them. Otherwise, they would have to meet current zoning regulations for single family or multi-family for that matter.
Okay, I think we're fine there. So we got a first, we need any other discussion before we take a vote. The modification, Ms. Joe, that you mentioned earlier, do we get everything already? You got it? Okay, the planning staff, they got automatic, got all the modification that we're talking about earlier?
I don't think, Anders, Commissioner, you've expressed your position on this.
I'm sorry, I think my microphone is. So we got all the modification that we talked about in the earlier? In motion.
Oh, I had a question through the chair. So the the definition for the accessory dwelling unit. So is the commission okay with the definition as is? Or are you saying you want to add kitchen to that? Or is eating, cooking, sanitation, or eating, cooking, is that sufficient? Or I I would like clarification on whether you also want to add kitchen to that that definition.
I'm fine as it is.
Yeah, I think I think it's sufficient the way it is.
Okay.
It's fine.
Okay.
Okay. But Ms. Joe and Ms. Quick, you know, earlier said that there is some modification that need to be, that needs to be addressed in the motion. Do we get everything already?
Yes. Yes, staff will make those.
The staff get everything?
I'll make those changes, yeah.
Yes, if if I could, just to clarify, I'm just going to restate what
Yeah, please do.
For conditions are.
Just so we're clear.
Yes, number one, add provision for kitchen facilities to the AJADU definition. Number two, add owner occupancy requirement for JADU if it is not already provided in the ordinance. Number three, and number three and four are staff's provisions, requested revisions, which is minor revisions to section ten point oh five point three one five zero as presented by staff. And number four is the revisions to attachment B to add JADU to where it references ADU.
All good? All right, shall we take a vote? Bernard, can we get a roll call, please?
We have a motion by Commissioner Quick. We have a second by Commissioner Davis. And the vote is Chairman Feng.
Aye.
Commissioner Quick.
Ms. Quick?
Muted.
Take your time, we'll wait for you.
I got it.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Got it.
Commissioner Quick.
Yes.
Commissioner Joe.
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Wong.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
That's passed five to zero with the modifications.
So we'll send that up to the city council for further approval. Okay?
Yes.
So that's the end of nine A. Thank you so very much, it was nicely done. It's a long time coming, but thanks, South, for such good work. We really appreciate it and the city is in need of it. Commissioner comments? Anybody, Ms. Davis?
I just want to mention the our gathering that was on Saturday here in Millbrae. It was a really important event for our city and the community showed up and stood up for what was right. I'm proud of Millbrae and I'm looking forward to all of us working together on this critical issue.
Black Lives Matters, thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment?
Just to, again, I just wanted to thank staff for getting us to this point of the ADU. Also, thanks to Chair Feng for being our chair for this past year. So looking forward to continuing on, us working well together.
Thank you, Commissioner Joe. Commissioner Quick, go ahead.
Yeah, so thank you very much for everything you've done this year and to staff. When we'll be having another meeting and I'm gonna need to do some practicing if we're going to have to do it via Zoom.
I'll help you any way I can.
We'll be having another meeting the beginning of July.
July sixth, the Monday after fourth of July.
Do I have any idea on the agenda?
As of as of right now, we have, and this is still very tentative, so it's subject to change. But we have a single family addition, second story addition. And then also consent calendar item, which is to extend design review approval. The approval expired a couple of months ago, so that's on the consent.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Commissioner Wong, go ahead, please.
I guess for the Black Lives Matter protest, I was also there on that day. I think that's a very important issue that we face in our society. Was a very peaceful protest. There are many city council members there. I was there. You know, just a note that you know, we need to be careful how we view these issues. You know, as a member of, we're going to UC Berkeley over twenty years ago. And it's kind of a hotbed of protests and demonstrations. And by far, a lot of the demonstrations and protests were very peaceful. But there's always an element that comes in or attracts that aren't part of that peaceful protest that comes afterwards. That, you know, a lot of angst and unrest and other people that aren't part of that peaceful protest that gather afterwards. And we see this even sometimes when, you know, there's celebrations even in our society, like, you know, people win Super Bowls, cities win World Series, baseball. And then people go out and like cars on fire and kind of release tensions. And it's not to say that a lot of these riots that are going on are part of that protest. But I believe in the, you know, system, our American government, democratic process. You know, this public process right here, we should all invite public if they have comments and concerns. You know, we're all available, we're all neighbors, we're all members of the community. That, you know, we could talk and discuss your ideas and your suggestions for any public project, for the planning commission. Open and willing to talk to people in our community. I don't think that we're not available and that people don't have a vehicle to express their concerns because this is it right here. And I appreciate all the staff and the commissioners' times. We're all volunteers. A lot of all the commissioners were not paid. And we're trying to contribute and help make our society better.
Thank you, Commissioner Wong, for your comments. So I would just make a few comments. I'm extremely proud to see nobody came together this past on the protest. And we've shown the world that we as a city and as a community can protest under a common cause to end social injustice and racial injustice. And we can do that in a peaceful way as a community. And and I'm very proud of it to see the whole community can come together and recognize that these social issues and protest in a very peaceful way and in the in the quest to end these injustices. So I'm extremely proud of Millbrae being able to do that and we set the example sort of open sea, right? So I'm extremely proud to to witness that. And then at the same time, you know, for the same on the same token throughout this whole year, I like to thank the commission for your trust and your support throughout my chairmanship. And, you know, we've seen at the beginning of the year and then we have a lot of projects coming through and towards the end of the to the towards the end of this term, we had COVID nineteen and, you know, the whole world changes upside down. But yet, you know, this commission is still able to convene and still can do people's business. And I'd like to thank everybody, you know, for your trust and your support throughout this difficult time. And I'm proud to pass over to Commissioner Quick for the next year's going forward. And I'm sure she will do a fine job in leading this commission and represent this commission in a spectacular way. So with that, you know, I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity. And I'm glad to have been your chairman, thank you so very much. So any other announcement from anybody else? Okay, meeting is adjourned, thank you so very much.
Thank you. Very much.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.